How they started the water department in the county park.
Oh, I love it. I think we have some history in the park. We do stuff like that. Well, I know it started, but I didn't like looking at it.
If they were looking at maybe taking out a falls pond, ice pond, trip lake.
Uh. Hello? 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 Whistle. Thank you.
If we can get that done, that'd be wonderful. And if we can get a contractor to do it for us, even better.
And that would be logical. That would be extremely logical.
You know, it's a job that we're probably capable of doing, but it's it's big pipe and it's 2,000 feet. So, yeah. So that's why we're hoping we keep hearing about infrastructure money. And we're under the impression that the state drinking water program is going to administer that, but I haven't really got anybody to tell me that for sure. So. I told you we applied for a generator. Looks like we've done. I feel good about getting the grant 50 50. And so it won't be any more than $20,000. We have to pay for it all. And then then the state will reimburse us. That's the highlights. You've got any questions? We'd be more than happy to answer them.
Putting off things, Steve, you know, maybe it's time to just pick it away so that there's something over here. So.
You're absolutely right.
Stay on top of things. It's not as expensive. You don't have a whole list.
No, well, a few months ago, I gave you all a copy of our capital improvement wishes. I don't think you've got one, but I make sure you do get one.
Okay, thank you.
And and we're going to be wish list. And I will tell you in 2015, we got a rate increase and we were broke. The PUC won't let you have a rate increase and until you improve. And so we met the criteria. You've got a rate increases only 10%. The two before that were 22 and 23%. And just about the time we get that rate increase, there was an awful boom in water department. We got Hanapins, CN Brown, McDonald's, 10,000 feet in Poland with 58 services, two or three sprinklers. We got the trailer park and and two more hydrants there. And the Maury Estates was 14 lots over there. We had an awful boom and all of a sudden our bank account is getting quite fluffy. And so these things we put off, I should have been paying more attention to the income. And and we should have been taking care of some of these little things. That's why our list seems pretty big today. But we talked to the accountant. We have about $300,000 in the bank. Some of that set aside for capital improvement. But but it's it's money. It's right there that we could touch today. And and the accountant said, you you talk about, I know the word, I'm not going to say it, the money that you have to set aside to to make the town run. And and we have the same thing. And so the accountant said that we could easily spend $100,000 and and not hurt our bank account.
What does what do they say your escrow should be or your set aside?
We have a little more than 100,000 earmark for capital improvement. And and he said that we have 300,000 roughly, and he said, we could spend 100 of it easy. So I I'm guessing his his thought process was 200,000. Yeah. And and we we just checked today. Over last year in November, we got almost $20,000 more this year than we had last year. So so we're in a good place, but all this growth is slowing down and stopping on us. You know, we've seen it, you know, we've seen 10,000 feet in Poland, trailer park, the CN Browns and Hanapins of the world. So our growth is going to slow down. But but I don't see a rate increase for a few years. Then you'll be dealing with her instead of me.
So it sounds like you're telling us that you have the money to do these things.
We absolutely.
And it's time to do it.
We absolutely do. And and like I said, we we kicked that can down the road for a few years, looking for government money and stuff. And and now hopefully that government money will buy as big a better projects. We'll do the pump ourselves. Just contract it out.
Yeah.
But we have a backup pump. You let us buy a few years ago so that, you know, when the big pumps down, the little pump will do the job. Got any questions? I'd be glad and try to answer them.
Well, I just.
I'm sorry to go, but.
I understand. Thank you.
I I'll be 71 when I'm done. And, you know, I thought it was going to last forever. I told you my mind and my heart said I'd last forever, but my knees, my ass, I won't.
Well, thank you, Steve.
Yes, thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you very much for.
Done great work for us.
I tried.
So who are your replacement? It's going to be except you're such a force and it's going to take more than one person to replace you.
Well, we're going to split the job. That's the way we got it planned. You you'll hear more about it because it'll be our decision in the end. But Michelle already does the finances. And Jake knows probably as much about this system as I do. And he's got the youth on his side. And so the two of them will share what I do now.
You picked two very good people to do it, I think.
We we won't skip the beat, I'll tell you that. And in the the thought process is we have to have somebody around seven days a week, 24 hours a day. And so when I disappear, they'll hire another serviceman. So the the head count will come up the same. And we'll have two servicemen so they can share the duties on the weekend. We've got a plan. As it gets closer, we'll we'll brief you on it.
Thank you again, Mr. French.
Does anybody online want to speak or anyone in the audience? This is still an open public hearing. Right. We will close the public hearing and move on to comments from the public. Everyone gets three minutes each.
Can you unmute Shannon?
I I'm not looking to talk. I'm just looking. I've been looking to join to see if I can actually hear people. So I'm good. But thank you.
Right, we will close the comments from the public and move to council discussion topics.
I want to thank the fire department for being so gracious with us last Friday, this past Friday. They did a wonderful job. We've got a wonderful group over there and we should be very thankful for the individuals we have over there.
Okay, well, the move on from council discussion topics to the town manager report. You're up, Nick.
Okay, because of the heavy agenda here, I'm going to be very brief. Okay. First, though, a little rah rah, okay. And Eric's, you got to do us proud. Okay, you wanted some rah rah, you're going to get some rah rah. Okay. And so I'm going to turn it over to our police chief, Jeff Goss, who is going to kind of give us an update to the Mechanic Falls Police Department and our pursuits of employees. Jeff?
Thank you. So over here in room is my sergeant that I hired, Sergeant Paul Schroder. He's on board. And last week, we extended an employment offer to another subject, Michael Rio. Will be starting on the 19th of December with us. But he'll only be here very briefly, and then he should be leaving for the academy for 18 weeks. So good, bad, we get somebody, but then we lose them. But we're hoping that that'll bring more people forward that want to come where they could see we're starting to rebound. And we'll go from there.
When does the academy start?
I think it's the second week of January.
Oh, wow, we will be here briefly.
Yeah. So that's it. But he's on board, cleaning the place up, keeping me in line and doing a great job so far.
Well, welcome.
And I will also add that Jeff, you guys don't know how much time, effort and energy Jeff has put into rebuilding this police department. I mean, between filling in chefs, talking to everybody, and it's my understanding that Mr. Schroder has also been quite the person trying to gain us some more employees as well. So compliments to them both. And if you don't mind, I think it's due proper to give them a round of applause for their efforts.
Thank you. We appreciate your efforts.
Very much. Thank you for not bailing too, Chief Bob.
And so the only other update I will share with you is just some standard holiday hours. So the the office will be closing on Thursday, December 23 at 12:30 PM. And at 12:30 PM, we will be having the annual staff Christmas party. Council members are more than welcome to show up at the Village Pizzeria if you wish at 12:30 and join us. We will be reopening from the Christmas break on Monday, December 27 at 8 AM. We will also be closing Thursday, December 30 at 12:30 PM for the New Year's break and reopening on Monday, January 3 at 8 AM. And that will conclude this month's edition of TM updates.
Okay, so we have no old business. We will move on to new business. 10.1, the water department budget. You wrote consideration and discussion. Do we need to accept it?
Yeah. So basically, now that you've had the public hearing about his budget, so this is where assuming you guys want to approve the budget, it is your duty to to look at the budget and to approve it. It is a calendar year budget, and so we need you to take action tonight. So if you're willing, a motion and a and a vote to approve would be awesome.
I make a motion, we approve the water budget.
I second that motion.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Thank you. And thank you to Steve and Michelle.
Thank you so much for all your hard work.
We can mail this back or this on. Okay, great.
I think you can also email it to them. I've emailed it in the past. He puts his email address right on the bottom.
Thank you.
Thank you.
10.2, updated building codes.
Yes, I'm going to turn it over to Alan, who will take the show away.
Hello. So on that next page in your packet, you can see the old building code as it sits. And there's some differences in the old way that it was put into our ordinance and voted on. And the new way I'm suggesting. It took me about six months to figure out what manuals we're supposed to be using. And I had to call all over the place. I got in touch with. I got in touch with MMA and asked them for specific guidance on all of our building, all the building codes that we're supposed to be following. So it is, it is very different. And the reason for that is the only building codes that the town council needs to look at and approve went after they've been updated at the state too. And those are the building codes on the second page. You can see where it says IBC, which is the International Building Code and the IRC International Residential Code for One and Two Family Dwellings. Those two, the way the legislation is written from the state, the council has to someone here in town has to watch that. And when they get updated, the council needs to look at those numbers and vote to adopt them. We have to adopt them because they're part of MUBEC. And we've opted into MUBEC, the main uniform building and energy code. So we have to do that. When they update those forms, there's no alternative, but it's the process has to be done. The other codes that you can see at the bottom of the first page of the building codes there, the first bulleted item says National Electric Code, Uniform Plumbing Code, Main Subservice Wastewater, Life Safety Code, which also applies to the fire department, Standard for Fuel Burning Appliances, which also applies to the fire department, Water Supplies for Suburban and Rural Firefighting, which applies to the fire department and and that's it. So those ones, if you have it the way I've written it here, like if you look at the first one, National Electric Code, Current Edition as Determined by the Main Electrical, Elektrischen's Examining Board. We don't have to approve that when those new versions come out. If you say this, if you vote for it like this, when it gets updated, we have to follow it. We don't have to vote it in. It's the current thing by that board, and it's a done deal. I don't know why they don't do that with the building codes, but it's just the way it is. So all of those other ones, we can just follow those professional boards when they put them in place. As soon as they put them in place, we can adopt those. We don't need to vote on it by the council, but we can just automatically adopt those and use those as our building codes. We have to anyway, because it's MUBEC and we've opted into that. It's really a lot of bureaucracy, but it's, I put it differently like that. So that at least if we don't get to it, because you can see when the last one, so the last ones we're working with are 1999 National Electric Code. That's a long time. There's been many, many updates since then. And that's what's in our ordinance. So it's inaccurate anyway. So if if we do it this way that I've proposed, at least we're up to date with most of them, even if we don't get to the new edition of the building codes right on time. We only have two things that we're out of date with. So and what this matters is when we go to court. We have to have the current edition that we're supposed to be using when we go to court. If we're not doing that, then the legal standpoint is not very strong. So also, you notice on that last page, the second page, it talks about the American Society of Heating, Refrigerating and Air Conditioning or ASHRAE standards. We don't have anywhere in our ordinance about ASHRAE standards. However, those are mandatory and are part of MUBEC now. And I'm not sure how long they've been a part of it. But we don't even have those in our ordinance. So they need to be because we've opted into MUBEC.
May I ask a question?
Yeah.
When did we opt into MUBEC?
I don't know that I don't know the date. But we but we did up opt in. But we did opt in for MUBEC, which includes the electricity, the energy conservation part of it, which we had an option for that. But it was, we opted into the whole thing. Yeah, the only other difference that I want to bring up is the bottom of the second page, there's a section in our ordinance titled H, which talks about the electric code, 1999 electric code. We don't need that anymore because we can just go by the electrician's board. What they say is what we're supposed to work with, so I just removed it in that bottom section. So I took those lines out and it just says no electric, electrical wiring can be done unless it's to code and inspected by the electrical inspector who is me. Yeah. So do you have any questions about that? Because that's a lot of stuff.
So you're just asking us, you need a motion to adopt?
Yep, we need to adopt. If you adopt this language, I'll replace that section where, where it says minimum construction standards. I'll replace that section with the section you see there, section six, where it says new underneath. And all those things will just be automatic, except for the 2015 IBC and IRC, which the next time those come out, they'll be the 2018 version. And I'll have to pay attention to when those change and I'll come to you and say, we need to change 2015 to 80.
I have a question, if I may, Alan. Could they just accept and adopt the updated building codes as presented?
Perfect. Perfect.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second that.
Okay, any discussion?
This is just kind of cleaning things up and this is going by kind of the state, the, the electrical boards in the state.
Yep, so they're all listed there and that's
Brings us up to date.
It does. Yep, that's, so the state, the version for the building codes are 2015 right now, that's the most recent version, although 2018 is gonna be coming out real soon. So we'll have to update that, but all the other stuff, those people are just on top of that, more, more so than towns adopting each individual one when they get there. So yeah, the electrician's board, the plumber's board, the people for the subsurface septic systems and that stuff.
What the state have.
It's, it's all with the state, yep, all those boards are all state appointed. Yep.
Well, that's why I asked if you knew when we opted in, because the reason they were that outdated was because the last time it had been visited, we had not opted into MUBEC and therefore we could do that.
Gotcha.
Yeah.
No, I don't know the, the exact date, I didn't look at that.
So there's no, there's no, no tricky changes in here, these are just updates that
We've opted into MUBEC and it's, it's says, well, not in this stuff, but the stuff I got from MMA, Main Municipal, says you can't choose anything else, you can't go any other way but this. It's the way it is.
All those in favor?
Great. Thank you.
Moving on to 10.3, PD Plan Switch from AC to 2C, do you wanna tell us about that, Nick?
All right, and so, so that way we can inform the public. I will, I will read from the document, assuming you guys will vote to approve it and then immediately sign the document. And so, a little context quickly. So it's my understanding, being here for the last few months, that the prior PD contract had, the people involved in putting the contract together had every intention on making the following change in that contract. The actual language never took place. And so this is an effort in the, in fixing, not only fixing that, but giving us another nugget to help rebuild the police department. And I will read it for the public. "December 6, 2021, to see if the town will vote to change its plan for its eligible police officers. The change is effective January 1, 2022 for future service only. The town agrees to: A. Provide Special Plan 2C to its full-time police officers who work at least 37 hours per week, 52 weeks per year, for service rendered after December 31, 2021. Service rendered before January 1, 2022 remains under regular plan AC. B. Continue to provide regular plan AC to all other full-time employees who work at least 37 hours per week, 52 weeks per year. C. Continue to exclude employees who work less than 37 hours per week and/or less than 52 weeks per year and its elected appointed officials from participating in the plan. D. To authorize Victor Hodgkins, town manager, to sign the amended agreement between the town and the main public employees retirement system." So this is basically giving the PD folks a step up in the retirement plan. And it's a minimal cost to the town. And again, it's just fixing something that should have actually taken place before and it, and it will help us in getting new people.
I would entertain a motion.
I will have, make a motion to approve as written the
The change for the retirement program.
The change for the retirement program.
For the police officer, right?
I'll second that motion. Either one. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Thank you. And this is for them, so, okay, I'm gonna pass that around. And Paula, when you're done, you can just leave it on the desk, we'll collect it afterwards. Yeah, I'll take the blue sheets back as well.
While we sign this, can you just give us a little bit more information about PD contract? The next 10.4.
Say again, I'm sorry.
Will you just give us some more information? Is this, is this part of this? Including this in the new?
10.4, no, it's, it's related, but it's not the same thing.
Okay.
So 10.4, item 10.4, if I may.
Yes, please do.
When I got here, the, the PD contract had expired, because when it was signed, it was signed for one year. And so we were operating essentially off of a dead document. And the way that these things work, unless you have a new contract, that's exactly what you do, is you work off of the expired contract until a new one is signed. And so, between recent actions that the council has taken concerning stepping up and pay for police officers to try to reconstitute the PD and other actions that are another amendment, a part of the agreement, what, what I have been doing with the, with negotiations with the PD union is essentially reviving the dead document as an interim document that will, assuming you sign off on it, which will be active as of tonight through June 30, 2022. Now, the only changes in this document other, are the, the front page, which has the dates and all the language of the document is the same until you get to the very end of the document and you'll find it addendum A, which is the already approved pay scale that you folks approved before I got here. And addendum B, which talks both about the document that you just signed moving the retirement plan and/or giving them the option for the ICMA 457B plan. And so both are now officially a part of this interim document that will live, assuming you sign, between now and June 30 of 22. And if you sign, then what we will do, beginning just after the holidays, we will start working on a brand-new three-year contract, which is the norm for a police contract. And we'll begin that process with the hope of having it all finalized by June 30 of 2022 to be effective July 1, 2022. So this is, you took the very first step with the document you just signed on the retirement. Now this, I'm asking you to approve and to sign the actual PD contract that will survive until June 30 of next year.
Well, with that said, I'd entertain a motion to revise this contract for June 30th, 2022.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
Any discussion? Right, all those in favor?
Thank you. And I'll give you the signing page and that page will be attached officially to, as the last page of the document. And the union representative on that page has already signed off. And while you folks are signing, just a friendly reminder that when we go into union negotiations, I'll want to know if anybody from the council would like to be a part of those negotiations and whom else you would like to officially have be a part of that. And we'll discuss that next month. Okay? I'm sorry?
Who, who's been a part of that? That's you and Lisa?
Well, do, for this interim document, essentially it was, it was me. But for the next three-year document, it really, it's the normal contract. And so, normally these things, either you would just turn it over to an attorney to do, which can get kind of expensive, or you can just turn it over to me and other staff to do. It's not uncommon at all for someone from the council to be a part of that negotiation process if you wish to be. And so it can take many different forms, so I would just ask you to think of yourselves if it's something that you would be interested in serving on.
Prior to Mr. Hodgkins showing up, it was the town manager, Lisa, and then Chief Goss.
Yes, Joe, and then Joe Emery.
And so that, you know, we can still do that sort of format, it's entirely up to you, okay? But we'll discuss it next month.
So everyone signed that? Okay, moving on. Moving on to 10.5, Health Insurance Plan.
Okay, so this next one, for the public and anybody listening on the internet, the current health insurance program that the town provides for its employees, the actual program is not going to be available in 2022. And so after a lot of homework and discussion, it's, it's the program that I'm recommending that you approve this evening is the program that you have in front of you, which is the NB Anthem Renewal PPO 1500 Program, which is very similar to the current program, the NB Northern Benefits Anthem PPO 2000. So you'd go from PPO 2000 to PPO 1500. And that's the insurance program that I would put in front of you to approve this evening if you wish.
And this is what the employees were okay with?
So, the, as a part of the due diligence on this subject matter, I reviewed a lot of various options and consulted with staff as a part of the process. And they were, at the end of the day, most of the staff was choosing this particular option. And so that's, that's why I'm putting it in front of you this evening.
I would entertain a motion.
I make a motion that we transfer to the NB Anthem Renewal PPO 1500 for our employees for health insurance purposes for the coming year.
I second the motion. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Thank you. Actually, not on that one, next one.
10.6.
We're creating a good habit here, right?
Health insurance opt-out, $2,600 a year.
All right, so as a part of the health insurance process, well, first let me do a, a caveat as I enter this conversation with you. I am one of the affected, so I have a dog in the hunt, the public should know that if you approve this, that I am one of the three employees that this would impact. And currently, the town has a policy which states that if you do not choose to have town health insurance, that you can opt out of the program and instead receive a stipend in the amount of $1,800 a year. Keeping in mind that for, you know, the top end for a family plan for insurance is well over $20,000, so it's, most people think it's a great deal to, for the town to have employees opt out. It's been my understanding that that $1,800 figure has been employed for many years at this point. And as a part of the updating of the insurance policy itself, it seems fitting for me, even though I do have a dog in the hunt, to put in front of you, updating the opt-out amount from the previous 18, and current $1,800 and moving it up to $2,600. And I would not envision this would be something that would be revisited on an annual basis. But every few years, it should be taken a look at, because everything does go up. And so, if you folks are, are willing to approve the personnel policy update on this, I do have a document for you to sign if you wish to.
So, just some questions?
Sure.
So you're saying that it would only be three at this current time?
Yes, myself and two others.
Okay. Any discussion about?
Do other towns offer this, Nick?
I'm sorry?
Do other towns offer this?
Yes, they do, in varying amounts. You, we have a neighboring town that offers a stipend that is greatly more than this amount that we're talking about, $6,000 is what they offer. Other towns offer, seemingly, pretty much, I believe, everybody that I checked out is offering more than the 26. But honestly, where we've been at 18, I think to go to, you know, something quite a bit higher would be a shock to the system. So the $800 bump. And, and, and quite frankly, I just pulled the figure out of thin air and here's the reason, here's, here's what was my thinking. If we're gonna bump it up, I actually went to one of the other employees that it would affect and without saying anything, asked that person to give me an idea what they would like to have. And they were within $100 of what I'm suggesting, so I'm bringing that to you. We get paid 26 times a year, so it'd be 100 bucks every paycheck and that's how I came up with the $2,600. It's as simple as that, honestly.
Thank you.
I would entertain a motion.
I move we accept the personnel policy update.
I'll second that. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Thank you. And now, you get to sign. And now you get to sign. Actually, folks, I'm gonna just pass this around to.
All right, I'm gonna move to ten point seven, First Light Contract Proposal.
Oh, boy. So I have been on a, on a hunt. I've been on a hunt to save the town of Mechanic Falls money when it comes to our phone bills, which I personally think are outrageous. Normally, we spend to the tune of a thousand seventy dollars a month in phone bills. And again, I think it's outrageous. I have put a lot of time, effort, energy into this particular subject. I feel like mostly a defeated man, but I will be able to save us a little bit of money around the margins. We will be eliminating a few phone lines which will help. I was hoping to eliminate a lot of phone lines, but in my, in my search for the truth, if you will, I I was hoping that I could provide us an avenue to revisit the old days where we could have a few lines and a whole lot of extensions, but if it seems like that world is fading away with old copper. And everybody today is doing this VoIP stuff. And unfortunately, what it means for us is that the bad news is, is that every phone needs its own telephone line, the way that this operates. The good news, however, though, is that there, and being fair, there is not a huge expense upfront for buying the backbone to a system that I would envision. And the phones that would be necessary to do that. So there is a trade-off, but the, so you save some capital expense to the tune of which I don't know. But as I did the research, I quickly came to the conclusion that even if we did this, it's kind of a dinosaur thing to do and would be quickly outdated anyways. And so the proposal that you have in front of you tonight has been exhaustively done. And so, and again, saving us some money with some lines. The, here's what will happen, is that they will upgrade our current internet as a part of this. Right now, we're have, we're at what they call thirty over five, and this will be thirty over thirty. So it'll be an upgrade into the internet. We will get new phones as a part of this. You know, the way that, quite honestly, the, the sales guy might not want me to say it to you this way, but the way that I would, it's the, the phones are like the printer. The real cost is the ink. And so that's how these things work. And so, but we will be getting updated phones. The current phones we have in the office are six years old, so they could use a refurb. And so we'll get some fresh fiber, we'll get a fresh connection to the fire station for the fire guys and, and the public work guys. There'll be some equipment changes over there. At the end of the day, I'd like to think that I'm saving us somewhere between a hundred and fifty and two hundred dollars a month. It's something, but it's not, I was hoping to cut it in half. And oh, that's you, Paula, okay? So, so that's my story. And so what I would like for you to do tonight, if you're willing, is to authorize me to enter into a three-year agreement with First Light for our phones and phone program.
Have you talked to other individuals, like consolidated communication?
So I haven't spoken to them, but what I did do is, as a part of the research, I, I, I went on, well, two things that I did is I reached out to Spectrum. Why wouldn't I? So got some guy in Massachusetts who, quite honestly, never called me back. You're not gonna, you know, so if you're not gonna call me back, if, 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 if you don't wanna take my money, you sure as hell ain't gonna, sure as heck ain't gonna service me. You know what I'm saying? So I quickly took that off the table. And I did do some recon online with a couple of companies in the state of Maine for this type of systems that I would really like to have. I, I just come to the conclusion that, at the end of the day, it's best for us if we just keep on keeping on and just try to save what we can by cutting a few lines.
You, you were, you were happy with their quality of, of service and response for a flight?
In terms of how First Light has treated the town of Mechanic Falls, yeah, I, I don't have a big problem there. Again, I, I, I just wish I could have delivered better savings.
And if it's some, and we didn't need those lines, then
Yeah.
Anyplace you can shave money off, we appreciate.
Something's better than nothing.
Absolutely. Okay, so I would entertain a motion to.
I make a motion that we allow the town manager to enter into a contract for three years with First Light. First Light for our communication for the sum of three years.
I'll second the motion.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Thank you.
Ten point eight, LED streetlight proposals.
All right, so full disclosure for anybody listening, I sent you guys some materials to look at in advance of the meeting concerning LED streetlights, and I've included that information in this packet for tonight. I think what I'm looking for, I'm looking for you guys to decide the direction in which you want to go. And you don't have to decide tonight, you can table it and think about it, or you can decide tonight. And to me, we're at the fork in the road. I've, I believe I've received good response about switching the lights to LED. The key question then is if we're going to do that project, do we go with CMP? Or do we go, do we buy the, the lights ourselves and go with a company like Realterm to walk us through the program and to do the installation? And so for the public, and again, you guys saw this information a couple of, a couple of months ago. The CMP information that they sent me, which you have, basically shows on two spreadsheets. Basically, they're saying we're spending roughly twenty thousand dollars a year now on streetlights, and that matches up with what we believe. And that the advantage of going with CMP would be that there would be no upfront costs for the town. You wouldn't have to lay out one dollar. All we would do is enter into an agreement with CMP. And quite frankly, I don't know if this, how this would work, because you guys are only allowed to enter into three-year agreements. They're asking for a fifteen-year agreement. So if you agree to be with CMP for the next fifteen years, I don't know what other choice you have anyways. But again, assuming we can get over that hurdle, then they will come in and swap out the current sodium lights to LED streetlights over the next several months. And so in many respects, it's a quick and easy deal. And by doing that, they propose that the costs would drop from rough numbers of twenty thousand dollars down to around thirteen thousand five hundred bucks. So the town would be saving sixty-five hundred dollars a year with no upfront costs and just let CMP do their thing.
They manage and do all, I mean, they manage the poles, take care of it.
Just like, just like they are now. Yeah, so it would, the only thing that would change would be the fact that they would be swapping over to the LEDs.
And that, and as you, that's not a cost for us, correct?
That if you went with the CMP game plan, that's right, it wouldn't be a cost for us.
Because we're still renting the equipment, correct? Is that what?
I'm sorry?
We're renting or leasing the equipment?
Yeah, so this, now we, yeah, great bridge, actually. So as a part of the program is that from, technically, from C, your CMP bill has, breaks out into three parts. It is the delivery of the electricity, the usage of the electricity, and in this case, the leasing of the equipment for the streetlights. So we don't own the streetlight equipment. We lease it from CMP and they build it into the transmission bill. And so by sticking with them, you would be, you know, saving roughly sixty-five hundred dollars a year, which is not crazy, I mean, that's pretty good, right? Especially if you don't have to give up any monies upfront. That's the CMP thing. Now, the real-term way of doing it would be for them to be kind of like our lead contractor, if you will, on on the town purchasing the equipment from CMP. And if you have your real-term packets, and if I can get you to turn to page ten. So as a part of their proposal, they've laid out the cost overview of using Realterm. And it's broken down to option one and option two. And the option one is just with photo cells. Option, option two is what, with what they call smart controls. So here's the difference. The, every streetlight would have a photo cell that is just dedicated to that one light. And it's, it is what it is. It's not, you can't manipulate it. And if it, if it burns out or whatever and needs to be replaced, they would replace it. We would be part of a program that would replace it. With the smart controls, which costs a little bit more in the overall, allows you literally, through an app and other things, I think Norway has done this. The towns that opt for the controls, the smart controls, can manipulate, manipulate any streetlight they wish, any bank of streetlights. Let's say you, you know, you get a, you get something that you know is not really getting any people usage, and there's no sense having it on till nine o'clock in the summer. So you can manipulate it to go off at six PM or to go to low power or whatever. So you have the ability with the smart controls to be in, literally in control of each individual streetlight if you wish to be. I personally don't have an opinion for you tonight, which is better or not. Again, for tonight, if you want to entertain the conversation, I think I'm looking for whether to CMP or whether to Realterm or to table it for another day. So I'll go through the, just so the folks out there listening have an idea. We were talking about the savings being roughly sixty-five hundred dollars a year for CMP, if we went that route. If we went the real-term route, it would include the costs, would it would be buying out CMP, which would be, I'll call it, it's a little less than twenty-seven thousand dollars. So we would be purchasing the equipment never to lease again. So there's a, there's a good and a bad there, right? It's like a car, you know, do you wanna own it or do you wanna lease it? Same type of conversation. And in addition to actually have pay a company that they use on target, you guys probably seen their trucks out, they use the company on target a lot for them, for the installation and maintenance of, of these lights. And so between the, the, what we would pay Realterm, buying the lights, all the other equipment, buying CMP, they have it all estimated in terms of the cost. So the photo cell option would be, we'll call it sixty-nine thousand dollars all in. Over twenty years, they project the savings to the town at over three hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars. So the savings are far greater with Realterm than they are with CMP. But it's a whole, again, it's just a different way of doing business. You own the lights. And so what you would do then is after the lights, you've purchased them from CMP, the streetlights equipments, equipment, and after the installation of the LED lights, you, we would enter into a yearly ongoing agreement with Realterm through OnTarget or one of their other companies at roughly two dollars a pole per month. And if a light goes out, they'll come and replace it, just like CMP does now.
What did you say about the two dollars per pole?
So, and again, I know I'm throwing a lot of information here. So as a part of the buying program with C, with the Realterm, we would have to enter into a maintenance contract. So if a light burns out, somebody's gonna come and fix it, right? And replace it. And so the program, rough numbers right now, it's two dollars. We have a hundred and two streetlight poles in town. And so if that number is, in the end, stays the same, then it would be two dollars a pole for, per one hundred and two poles. So what is that, two hundred and four dollars a month?
And who owns the pole?
So the actual pole is earned by, by, owned by CMP still.
Correct.
What you, what we would own as a part of that program, we would own, where do I have that information? The town would own the fixture, the light fixture itself, the mast arm bracket to hold up the fixture, the wiring fuse to the fixture, and the fuse itself. So those are the only components that would be town-owned.
And CMP owns the pole?
And
That do they, if a pole gets broken?
They replace it.
They replace.
They replace it.
And they also pay taxes on the pole, correct?
I believe so, yeah.
Would their tax still be that same amount or would?
Great question.
Would it change?
I, I, I would assume it would be the same amount. Uh, but that's a great question to be answered.
Yeah, just, just.
So, oh, and this is probably a good point for me to interject, that if you guys want to go with the Realterm or you just wanna even hear more information. The gentleman's name is Mark Carter. He is willing to come here on Monday, January third and be a part of your meeting in your January meeting. So, and he can answer probably some more detailed questions. But if you say tonight, Vic, we really want, we wanna do CMP, then obviously I won't, I won't have him come. But so either if you give me direction tonight about that, there, there to finish where I will, where I left off. So the photo cells they're projecting over twenty years would save us a little bit better than three hundred and thirty-five thousand. Option two with the smart controls, because you're paying upfront some more money for for the smart controls themselves, the savings would be a little bit under three hundred and seventeen thousand dollars.
Why if it's, you're using less electricity because you're turning?
Cost is, the cost costs more upfront.
Okay.
Basically, all your savings is going into the control, so. Basically, all your savings is going into the control. So, right?
Yeah, they, basically, a huge part of the savings is the leasing, the combination of the leasing equipment and the, and the less power you're using because they're LED lights.
So in year 21, once this has all been paid for, does the savings go up even more? Once the equipment's all?
Say, say again.
Well, I understand we pay for it upfront, but based on this, they're saying that over a 20 year payback.
Right.
Um, it would be three, three hundred and sixteen thousand. So in year 21.
Right.
We've paid off everything we've paid out. So have they given you a number for how much that'll go up?
So great question. So you, whatever, whatever program, if we went this way, we would have a lot of options. Excuse me. To come up with the monies upfront and have no payback, just pay it off upfront. Or to do some sort of financing over X number of years. Generally, you wouldn't go any longer than four or five years type of thing. And so, and, and once that payback is done, then the real, then the real savings start to really add up. Uh, but the overall math of the project, like what I'm showing you here in option one and option two, that's the numbers based on, um, the buyout of CMP. That's based on, you know, CMP's projected power cost today. So these numbers, I mean, power's going to cost more 20 years from now. So, but this is just taking it at face value today. So they can come up with a program. It's interesting to note in all fairness. So I'll use, I'll say that we just do the photo cells. And with real term, over 20 years, we're projected to save the town three hundred and thirty five thousand and change. CMP, if we went that route over the same 20 years, based on their estimate of sixty five hundred dollars per year for 20 years, the savings a hundred and thirty thousand.
I did the math real quick. It's, it's about sixteen thousand dollars a year savings by doing the photos.
Yeah. Yeah. You're going to wind up and based on.
Instead of sixty five hundred, it's sixteen thousand.
Yeah. And so on the next page, page 11, down at the bottom, you see some graphs. And so this kind of takes it in a nutshell, kind of leans into exactly what Daryl is saying, which is we're spending roughly twenty thousand dollars a year now. And we could take twenty thousand and make it look like forty five hundred. You know, ballpark, right? But though, because the, the real power in this is by not leasing, Mark and I, we were just spitballing some numbers. You're going to save roughly a thousand dollars a month just in the leasing costs. And then the rest is the power itself. So the real power in this conversation is those leasing costs.
Did you talk to Lisa about where we would come out with that money from?
Boy, you're reading my mind. And it's good information. So, um, I asked Lisa, I said, Lisa, so let's say they wanted to do this, where would we find twenty seven thousand dollars? Let's say we wanted to do it upfront. Just pull the Band-Aid off real quick. Where would we find twenty seven thousand dollars? And there's a couple of line items, a couple of reserve accounts that we have that we could pull the monies from. Or I haven't had a chance to share this news. This is why it pays to go to breakfasts and rub elbows. Danielle Loring, who is a citizen of the town of Mechanic Falls, has been extremely helpful to, to myself and to Lisa with this ARPA stuff. So part of like one of the categories in ARPA is lost revenue. Well, at first blush, the town of Mechanic Falls really didn't lose revenue during the, you know, last year's COVID thing. However, the government has a calculation sheet which factors growth into that equation. Factoring the fact that the town of Mechanic Falls didn't have hardly any growth because of COVID. The final number is of our hundred and fifty seven thousand a year. So, um, of the three hundred and fourteen thousand and change total, the town of Mechanic Falls can take, now I'm giving you a rough number, can take roughly eighty thousand dollars as lost revenue. The reason why this is important is because it allows us to use that eighty thousand dollars almost any which way we want. We're not as pigeonholed to the, like the other categories. So that gives us power. One of the thought processes I have is to take part of that eighty thousand dollars and to buy out CMP. Now, here's where it gets really good and Mark can explain this some more if you want him to show up. He said to me, Vic, he says, here's what a few towns are doing. He says, because I talked to him about buying out CMP at the end of the deal, he says, maybe you want to think about buying out CMP before we even begin. Because if we buy out CMP, as soon as we buy out CMP and we own the equipment, then we'll save that leasing amount at the, at the, at the start.
Start, yeah.
And let's say timeline like in here is like nine months. So in theory, if Mark and I are correct, and that's a big if, if we were a ballpark saving a thousand dollars a month and we got a nine month jump on it, that's an extra nine thousand dollars savings to the town of Mechanic Falls. And we could use the ARPA money to do the CMP buyout. Heck, you could even use the ARPA money if you want, that eighty thousand and do the entire project and not have any debt on it. I mean, it's for you guys to decide. I mean, once we, if we get there, if this is the avenue that you choose, then I'll present some options for you. Financing options, doing it this way, you know, and so you guys can decide how you want to move forward. But the key thing tonight is assuming you want to move forward with doing, switching over the lights to LED, which is more the direction you want to go? You want to do the CMP, no monies upfront, but less savings in the long term? Or to own the equipment? And by the way, if we were to own the equipment and buy out CMP upfront, Mark has already sent me an agreement, a maintenance agreement. Because if a light went out in February and we own it and they're not, and they haven't installed all the lights yet, what the heck happens? We will enter, we could enter into a maintenance program with his company and they will take care of that. And then if a light goes out, they'll install an LED. Yeah. Yeah.
How much for that?
So I didn't print it out tonight. Um, it's, I can print it out and, and definitely share with you anytime. I can, I'll email it to you guys or, um, I'll, I'll email it to you guys, but it's, you know, it's, it's going to be based on this two dollars a pole thing. That seemed to be where he was gravitating. So you could figure what would that be? Again, that'd be two hundred and four, two to hundred and four dollars a month. Over the nine months, heck, let's say it's 10 months. So that's a couple of thousand dollars.
Right. If we're, if we buy them out, we're saving a thousand dollars.
Yeah, yeah.
We're only saving eight hundred a month.
And, and, and again, I'd want to sharpen my pencil on all of that, but I'm just giving you the broad strokes this evening.
Does Norway do this? But what other, what other towns would, would have something similar to what we're talking about?
Norway, Paris and Oxford, Auburn.
They, they are with the real term?
Yep. Yep.
There's a list on.
A Rumford. Yep.
A quick question. Um, is the buyout and the contract figured into the savings or is that into the? You know what I'm saying? Like you're saying the savings is three hundred thousand dollars over 20 years.
Right.
Right. But is that taking into account the buyout, the buying the equipment?
Yes.
That's what I, I figured it did, but I just wanted.
On page 10. So the thing is, you know, it's.
I was pretty sure it did. I just wanted to make sure.
In the segment, there's a map on page seven. That shows all as well.
I mean, even if you paid for it, you know, like with the ARPA dollars.
Right.
I mean, you'd still have to factor that as real money.
Right.
So regardless. You know, so, yeah.
Here's what I'm thinking if we're going to be discussing this. I feel like we, this is a great time to be thinking about, you know, now and fifteen years down the road.
I agree.
And if we, right now, we have the opportunity with the ARPA money. You know, if it's, if that you say, it's, it's money that we won't be pigeonholed into spending a certain way. We have the we way. If we utilize that to save money every month, that seems to make sense. I don't think if we have money in our CIP that we would try to borrow money. I mean, who would want to hang on a note and pay interest when if we have the money, especially if we have it with our.
Right.
Um, I, I definitely would like him to come because I would just want to hear more.
Okay.
But, um, I mean, I was excited by the CMP saving. Now I'm way more excited about that. The, the, the real other one. So.
Yeah. I mean, to spend a little bit more upfront to save a lot long term.
Yes.
I mean, it's a win-win.
Yeah, we got, yeah.
And it's not even something that we have to come up with necessarily. I mean, it might be almost a gift horse right there.
Yeah.
I mean.
We have the first check from our, don't we?
Yes, we do.
We do. So we.
And you, you've spent some money for the life pack.
Yep.
And.
Which is about fifteen, right? Well.
Yeah, um, I'd have to, because we had some in reserve. I'd have to check with Lisa on the actual dollar.
This is something that the council, this is the council's decision, if we want to.
Yes.
Correct. Something that we. I, I, I like, I want to pull the trigger, but then I don't.
Yeah.
So I, I think if we have him, have that, let's say, Mark, have Mark come. I think it would sort of help us to just like agree to it. Because I, I just want more information and, and if we have him here, people online or people here can also ask questions. Because I feel like town people need to know more, but I feel like this is a really good opportunity to save money and to be, put us in a better position in the future as well.
Yeah.
I'd, I'd also like to know how much some of these other towns actually have saved, how long they've been online with real term and, you know, are the savings actually what they said they would be?
Yeah. So anecdotally, I had lunch with the Norway Town Manager, Dennis Lejoy. I don't know, what, six, three weeks ago, six weeks ago, something like that. And that was the question that I asked him. Because again, um, myself, Dennis and Butch Asland from Oxford, we were the town managers of the time of, of the three towns that, that, um, you know, spearheaded that project with three towns. Um, and all three towns have completed the project. And I asked Dennis, I said, so riddle me this. Were the savings as, as good as they said they were going to be? He says, oh, yeah. He says, and again, he says, at the end of the project, they sit down with CMP to make sure CMP readjusts the streetlight wattage for each light. Um, and so from soup to nuts, and Mark will kind of walk through that, the whole process from what they, one of the first things they would do is what they call a GIS of all of the streetlights. And they would put together essentially, well, let me tick down through here. So GIS audit, uh, what they would call it photometric design, because right now we have a hundred and two. They may come back to us and say, you guys may want to consider putting in four more poles here or you don't need those two poles anymore or whatever. So they do a whole design for you. And they pre do it in what they call an investment grade audit. It's a book, just like their proposal, but it's even a fancier book. I've seen it for Paris. Um, and then you folks take all that information. You don't make any decisions about actually signing on the dotted line until they get you all of this information and then you decide what you want to do. Okay? And once you decide, because you choose the bulbs, you, you, again, you're, you're here every step of the process. And then once you decide what to do, and then the project work begins. Um, and they have been using on target as the third party vendor quite a bit. And on target does a lot of this stuff. Uh, they work with CMP to switch the wattage changes. And then at the end, they hand over a file of everything, depending if you do the smart controls or not. They, there's some more stuff that goes on with all of that. Um, interesting to note, remember last time we talked about this? Um, I gave you guys a homework assignment to go to Norway, Paris and Oxford and see the streetlights. So in my talking with Mark, he said, you know, he said Auburn decided to do the four thousand Kelvin. The Kelvins, it's, it's kind of like, it's the temperature of the bulb. So three thousand is kind of a little bit more orangey, huge hue. The four thousand is brighter. And so if you go through Auburn, they have four thousand. You go up Norway, Paris and Oxford, they have three thousand. And you can kind of see the differences for yourself. You guys will get to decide. He says, most everybody does the three. He says, even some of them on the coast have gone to twenty seven hundred because, you know, the coast, the nighttime, the shimmer off the water is beautiful, keep it as beautiful as it can be, right? You know, so, but again, at the end of the day, you would be deciding all of, all of that.
Have there been any complications, any issues? What, what, what would be the downside?
Great question. I think that the, the biggest downside would be if a lot of equipment failed all at the same time. But as long as you're under a maintenance agreement, then you're paying a flat fee for that maintenance. So I mean, it's, it's like insurance. I mean, you're, you, you hope you don't have a, an event, but if you have an event, you're covered. You're paying the premium.
And does CMP have a spokesperson or, or?
So, um, I, I dealt with somebody in Paris who met with Butch and I, I went to Oxford to meet with her. Um, being here, I've contacted, I've done a couple of email threads with the person who's doing, representing us. If you want, I can see if that they, if they want to come and be a part of the January meeting. Um, you know, there's, again, there's as much simpler, right? It's, hey, we just keep on keeping on you. You agree that CMP is your, your vendor and we'll swap out the lights. And it's, it's really that simple. With the real term, now you're talking, you know, ins and outs and all of that good stuff.
But with CMP, that's not the same thing. It's just, it's just hard to, to, for me to wrap everything around there because we have been used, so used to CMP.
Right.
That it's, it's hard to change or to look at stuff and to, to feel that we're still going to get the same or maybe better service.
So at the end of the day, I don't know if this helps, but it, for me, this is how I kind of looked at it. You, you're leasing the equipment from CMP, which is really a maintenance agreement. It's no different than, than what real term is suggesting. It's just the price is different. You're paying a lot more than two dollars a pole right now with CMP.
And I'm assuming, Mr. Hodgkins, that if we did all of this and for five years after we do it, if we decided, uh, we want to go back to CMP, CMP would not hesitate to probably take us back.
I don't know. You'd have to ask them that question. I don't know. Um, I don't know. Maybe.
Well, they're still, they're still our supplier.
Right, yeah.
They're just, they don't own the equipment.
Exactly. It's the only difference is that you're, you're owning, you're owning the light and the arm and the fuse and the wiring. Everything else stays the same.
Looks like if we were leasing this building from a second party or if we own the building.
Yeah. I mean, that's, you know, I, I get that it's a different way of thinking and I certainly don't want to tell, I'm giving you all the information straight up. So you guys can decide. You know, because you guys are the ones that live, work and play here and, and, um,
I think we want, I think we would like to hear, to have the, what is it? Mark? Yes, Mark. We like to have Mark.
Okay. He's already penciled it in. I will confirm it with him.
Yeah. I mean, we just, you know. Yeah, I mean, we just, you know, take some time, then we can ask questions.
Yeah, and so you can take the next month and think about some questions and-
Ms. Sakman, would you like him to get CMP to send a representative as well, so we can compare?
I can certainly extend an invite. I don't know if they'll come, but I can extend an invite. You want that, or not?
I think we probably need all the information that we can possibly get to make the best decisions.
All right, and I will invite both, okay?
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Okay, so this, we're not, not tabling this, but this is on next month's agenda.
Yeah, so you will just, yeah, we'll just table it.
Continue it.
Moving on to ten point nine, the auditor RFP results. Did we get some?
Uh, yep, all right, let me get organized here. Okay, so this one's easy. So we put out an RFP, only one company responded. RHR Smith, you have the one sheet. Um, and, um, currently with the auditor that has been doing it for the town of Mechanic Falls, she can't do it any longer. Um, and so that's why you folks sent out an RFP a while back, way before I got here. And, um, she is charging us seventy-seven hundred dollars a year. And so this RFP from RHR Smith, and, and I'm familiar with these people, these were the auditors for Paris. So I'm very familiar with the company. Um, they propose a flat fee of no more than eight thousand dollars per year for the next three years.
Yeah, I mean, three thousand dollars, I mean, three hundred dollars, it's not-
And RHR Smith, honestly, they're one of the premiers in the state for auditing services.
So is this something that we-
So I, yeah, yeah, so I will need, uh, uh, kind of a combo, um, motion to accept the, the bid and to authorize me to sign.
I make a motion that we accept the bid from RHR Smith and Company for auditing purposes, and that we allow, uh, Town Manager Hodgkins to go into a contracted, contracted agreement with them.
I second that motion. Is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Excellent, thank you.
I was a little worried about that, what, what the increase would be, so I'm quite pleased with only three hundred.
Um, okay.
All right, ten point ten, town revow.
So I think this is fairly simple, too. Some of you know more about this story than I do. So, um, I reached out to John O'Donnell. And, um, I saw a thread that, uh, the prior town manager had with Mr. O'Donnell about setting up for a revow for you folks, uh, for FY twenty-three, twenty-four. And in my conversation with John, the, the only thing he needs from you is a commitment to, that you want to do the audit as scheduled for twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-two, twenty-four. And then, once you guys give him that confirmation, a, a vote would be good. Um, and give him, I'll reach out to him, let him know that it is confirmed. He will officially put Mechanic Falls, we're kinda penciled in anyways. But if we don't get to him, he's gonna take our slot and give it to another town. So it's high priority that if you want O'Donnell, uh, and Associates to, um, do the revow for the town, that you guys make a commitment tonight, it will be the flat one hundred and fifty thousand. We currently have a hundred and thirty-one thousand and change set aside for this. So we'll budget roughly ten thousand over the next two cycles, and, um, it will be paid for.
I mean, we're coming up on twenty-twenty-two anyway, so it's-
Yeah.
Be, it'll be here before we know it.
Yeah, and so as it says here, they'll do, they'll do some, some work in the second half of twenty-twenty-two to prep for the twenty-three, twenty-four revow, okay?
Okay. So you're just looking for a-
A motion to, to confirm, um, John, uh, O'Donnell and Associates, or whatever the company is.
Yeah.
Um, to be, to do the revow as scheduled.
All right, I'll make that motion that we, uh, authorize John O'Donnell and Associates to do the revow.
Okay.
Any discussion? Those in favor?
Excellent, thank you.
Uh, ten point eleven, Haley Ward Water Testing Proposal.
Good news, folks! Good news. So if you remember way back when I reported to you, oops, uh, we, we, our testing contract expired. We had the company SME do a one-off. They did it in November. Waiting for the report to happen, I asked for them to send me a three-year proposal. They did, to the tune of fifty-six thousand dollars and change. I asked to sharpen their pencil, they did. They came back at forty-nine thousand and change. I there, I looked at you guys and said that this is crazy. I'm gonna reach out to the other company that bid back in two thousand seventeen. Company was CES. People, companies like to change their name. CES is now Haley Ward. Uh, I spoke to the person that, um, I was in charge of, uh, working with the town back before two thousand seventeen. She put together a proposal, and you have in front of you a three-page proposal, and on page three of that, they proposed to undertake, uh, the scope of service in the lump sum project fee of thirty-one thousand five hundred or ten thousand five hundred per fiscal year for three years. So, we made, we took fifty-six to forty-nine, down to thirty-one five over the next three years. I say, let's declare victory, give me a vote, and we'll, and authorize me to sign, and we'll, we'll move on.
We definitely like savings. So, and it, what did it used to be? Eight, with eight thousand a year?
I'm sorry?
But what did it used to be? It was like eight thousand a year?
Uh, so the contract that went from two thousand seventeen to two thousand twenty was at a total package price of twenty-one thousand dollars.
Okay.
And so twenty-one thousand these years later, looks like thirty-one five, but keep in mind, not only is it lower than what we got otherwise, it's also looking into the future for the next three years.
Right, right, and we definitely need this. We have to have this.
Yeah, we gotta have.
Okay. Well, I would entertain the motion to accept this proposal.
I make a motion that we accept the proposal from Haley Ward to do our water testing.
And authorize me to sign?
And authorize Town Manager Hodgkins to sign the contract.
Second motion. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Excellent.
Wow, we really took care of business tonight. Thanks, work, folks.
That's a lot of work you guys.
Uh, just a quick question, there's a letter from RSU sixteen in here.
Yep.
So they've agreed to keep their voting with our voting.
Right, the only quid pro quo to that is that they need you guys to sign off for the referendum in the month of May on their timeline. So I've already given myself a task to make sure that I do my due diligence to line this up for you guys. And even if you have to come in one at a time, over the course of a week sometime in May to sign off on it, I'll have you do that, so it keeps their timelines as they need to be, okay? So it's, it's a win-win.
Yeah, absolutely.
Uh, just comment.
Hmm.
I really prefer the slip on my package rather than the staple, cause I can move my papers around.
Okay, all right.
I do too, and I'm gonna make sure you have it back, so you don't, don't say you don't have one.
I, I-
Just leave it right there.
I just appreciate being able to-
Well, it was much easier, yeah.
Well, the package's so thick. But I will keep that in mind.
Thank you.
Okay, I make a motion that we adjourn at eight seventeen.
I second that motion. All those in favor?
Adjourned, yay.
Yep. Oh, the water, oh, I didn't get one, actually.